A credit union is run by volunteers. We have a volunteer board of directors where a bank has cooperators and trustees. If you have a $5 member account, then you are basically an owner of the credit union. You have a right to vote at meetings and so on and so forth. Whereas a bank, you're just a customer. So you actually take ownership of the credit union by becoming a member of the credit union.
If anyone has any difficulty hearing into speeches, don't be afraid to ask us. We only have one mic here. They'll try to do our best and we'll pass it down or maybe use the stand-up mic. But if you have any difficulty, I'll just give a shout out. Before we decide, I'd like to thank Principal Ron Tomlin for the courtesy of accommodating us tonight here at Eastbrook Field. Thank you, Ron. First item on the agenda is student reports. Before we get to that, I would like Mr. Tomlin to have his students, they're going to speak in regards to the trip to Washington, come up so they can do their presentation and then we'll move on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay, thank you for having us. We're gonna do things a little bit differently this year. What we've decided to do is have student council officers from the 6th grade tell you a little bit about the trip we just went on this year. So you can see what you improve every year. Okay, so here are our officers.
Good evening. My name is Alexandra Demarsky. I'm a 6th grader here at Eastbrook Field Elementary School. We recently traveled to Washington DC in April and we would like to show you a few highlights of our trip. My class toured the US Capitol building. We also visited many of the monuments and memorials, including the Vietnam Mall and the Korean Memorial. It was an amazing experience.
Good evening. My name is Alexis Barnes. I was one of the four students to lay the wreath on the tomb of the unknown soldier at Arlington National Cemetery. It was an honor to represent Eastbrook Field Elementary School. We also had a step-on guide join us for the day while we were at Arlington and while we toured many other parts of DC. She taught us many things about the history of our Capitol. This was a trip I will never forget.
Good evening. My name is Emily Rhea. We had plenty of food choices throughout the week. CC's pizza buffet was awesome. We also had some downtime to hang out with our friends. The hotel was great, although packing everything back into our suitcases Thursday night proved to be a challenge for some of us. But it all fit on one day.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Tower. We want to thank you for taking the time to watch our presentation. Thank you for granting us the permission to go to DC this year. As Albert Einstein once said, "The only source of knowledge is experience." We learned many things about Washington before going in April, but the experiences we took home will last us for many years to come.
Okay, thank you very much. The group we went with was an absolute joy. We ran into some tough weather at Arlington and poured out all day. They all had smiles on their faces. We got to go to the Washington Nationals game and we sat in the very back row, as far away from the field as you can. And it was 30 something degrees and the only people complaining were the staff. The kids were awesome during the trip. So this next year, we're gonna be going April 13th through the 17th. We're estimating about 28 students and there're gonna be six faculty going, including the school nurse. So we'd just like your approval to go on this trip that I think they've been doing for 20 something years now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Knopf, a second. Second by Heather. Any further questions, Mr. Tomlin? If not, are those in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other student reports?
Before the students from David Pardy High School in Knox Trail speak, we'd just like to recognize them for being up here at every meeting and spreading their news about the schools. It's pretty brave to get up here in front of a microphone once a month or more and discuss the issues. But for Alicia Fogarski and for Maggie Paul, this certificate of recognition and appreciation is presented to you for outstanding dedication to Spencer Eastbrook Field Regional School District Student Representative in 2013-2014.
Any other?
Well, before I begin with my report, I would just like to say thank you for the honor of picking me. And when you recognized me in my 8th grade graduation speech, that meant a lot to me, that you would pick me out of juniors and seniors and you picked a freshman that you barely knew. Thank you. But so anyways, my name is Alicia Fogarski, a freshman at Pardy. Tomorrow, June 11th, we will be holding class officer elections and student council elections. Students will vote during their homeroom period. Good luck to all the candidates. Thursday, June 12th, Ms. Busier will be hosting a Pit Eagle Dinner and the cost is $20 per person for a full seven-course meal. Now that the end of the year is fastly approaching, thank God, final exams will be taking place. Periods 1 and 2 will be held on the 16th. Periods 3 and 4 will be held on the 17th. These will be half-days, but the buses will run at a regular whole-day schedule. The 18th will be our exam makeup days. Mr. Bassin and Ms. Robinoff, our freshman class advisors, will be holding a freshman class barbecue. It'll be on the 17th from about 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. and the cost is about a dollar. We're asking for donations for the cost of food. Also, on the 17th at 6:30, Ms. Busier will be hosting the Disney Spectacular Concert. There will be awards given out and there will be dessert buffet. We'll all be dressed in costume. It'll be a fun night. I hope to see you all there. And finally, the MCAS summer school will take place on June 19th and five weeks after that. It is open to all Pardy students and 8th grade Knox Trail students. So thank God the program is free thanks to a grant from his donation. Thank you.
I too would like to thank Mrs. Nelson for choosing me for this opportunity. Thank you. Hello, I'm Maggie Paul, President of the National Junior Honor Society. Students and staff have been very busy these past four weeks. On June 2nd, the National Junior Honor Society held its third annual induction ceremony. 14 new members were inducted. Certificates of achievement were presented to current members. Dr. Malvi was our guest speaker. He encouraged us to continue to set challenging goals for ourselves throughout our educational careers. On June 4th, we had a night at the Arts. Our band played and artwork was displayed throughout the building. It was a wonderful night and very well attended. On June 6th, the peer leaders and the National Junior Honor Society traveled to High Meadows for their field trip. Tomorrow, 8th grade will travel to New York City for their trip. They will take an Arbor cruise past the Statue of Liberty and attend the play Rocky on Broadway. On June 17th, the 8th grade class will hold their graduation at 5:30 in the gym. Each student was given four tickets for family members. A reception will immediately follow. The farewell dance will be held immediately following the graduation. The students and staff would like to recognize two wonderful teachers that are retiring this year. Mrs. Betty Wolfing, who was given 34 years of service, and Mrs. Susan Marquetti, who was given 30 years of service to the Spencer Eastbrook Field School District. We wish them all well and want them to know they will be dearly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is teacher association reports.
Nothing to report, but thank you.
Thank you. Next issue is hearing for visitors. Any visitors which should be heard? See enough? Okay. Next item, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 20th, 2014. Members have filled out the petition packet. If there's any corrections or exclusives to, otherwise, a motion to approve? Yes? Any other directions to be made? If not, motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Cootie, is there a second? Second by Heather. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Aye. Also voted. Approval of the expenditure report of May 31st, 2014. Budget transfers, budget 2014. And update by you.
Okay, so on the fourth page is where the requested transfers start. The first two pages are just cleanup transfers like we have every month, just moving money within the same fund. Then on the third page of transfers is where we're requesting that we take unencumbered funds that have not been spent so far this year and move another $150,000 to purchase technology equipment. The list of all these little accounts goes on to the next page. The next transfer after that is $50,000 into tuitions, from the savings we had in the following accounts after that. Then we'd like to move $17,100 into purchase workbooks. And then another $3,200 to purchase library supplies from other funds. Do they have any questions?
Any questions from any members in regards to transfers? Okay, no?
Need a copy? I have extras here.
Any questions from any members in regards? You have one or two seconds to... There's no questions. Is there a motion to approve? So much. Motion by Mr. Cootie to approve. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Knopf?
On what page are you looking at? That's report.
Should be right up on the top.
First line.
First line? Forgot.
Please, you all sit. Any other questions? All right, if not, all in favor? Aye. Also voted.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out two things. One is that, as has been the practice this year because we are under the watchful eye of a financial overseer, this ultimately, we've already pre-reviewed, but ultimately reviewed again by the financial overseer and then from the Commission of Education's office before any final transfers go through. But if you also recall, I think it was a good month or two ago, I advised the committee that we had conversation with the Commissioner's people that now that we were anticipating entering full autumn, if there were going to be any movements, more so than what we had done during the year, that we needed his office to respond quickly because of the timing in this ugly year. And I can tell you what the committee has done so far with respect to their transfers, we couldn't have had more cooperation from the Commissioner's office. I want to commend the folks that have been working with us. Similarly, as we go into the last few weeks here, we wanted to get this in front of the committee so that we could get the Commissioner up so we don't necessarily, as we close out the year, people stop and disappear. Not only in the school district, but at the state level, the case is coming up. So I thank Commissioner and his folks and I thank the committee for the handling of these issues. The second piece is, and I'm surprised Craig did not bring it up, but he's been asking for some time with respect to the electric issue at Wyatt Village. And I asked Julie to comment, and we finally brought a good response as we look up some state people that have complained that Julie was not possible and that. So at least they got someone that would react to what I've been saying. It's still gonna take us some time, but at least we're heading down the right path. Julie, can you explain that?
So yesterday I had a meeting with someone from the Department of Energy Resources with the state and someone from National Grid. We went through kind of all the problems, they looked at our bills. They're going to do some further analysis. We're going to get a meter in there to test and see if that's the problem. They're also getting a project, I can't remember, called PECs. I can't remember the actual term of what they were. Someone else is gonna come out from National Grid specializes in schools to come look and try to figure out if there's something going on. They thought the bills didn't seem high and they're gonna look into that. And also looking to, we're paying a higher rate in Wyatt Village than we are other schools. We're gonna have a conference call later this week with National Grid to try to work out why is it that they're trying with more Wyatt Village versus the other schools? And they think it's probably due to using more, but they thought maybe they could resolve that as well. So we're moving forward with trying to resolve the high costs of Wyatt Village.
Thank you, Julie. Correct?
I need to get off the knowledge if I turn up at the school conference and we use the packet. And that's what I was asking, what the regrets, I hope to feed what's in this proposal for less. And that's the deal. But the Wyatt vote, because both vote on the same time, we have energy. It's not always my question, but thanks to Nancy and Julie, we're able to see the results.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the treasure report. This was a request by Mr. Knopf to the treasure. Sue? Any questions, Mr. Knopf?
Just off the top again. We've always had a lot of doubts about this.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the unfinished business. Curriculum report on MCAS and POC testing. Dr. Malvi?
We continue with our work with DSEC people. And from our last meeting, we've had several meetings that they have Karen Zaleski. With respect to last-minute items for this year, the more report, we start to begin the planning process for next year. We're gonna ask Karen to come up and give us a little snapshot of that. We also thought that we were gonna get their full team out here in June before we broke for the summer, but with the program scheduled, it's not possible. We do have an aid down September and will begin that planning process for the year's activities, which will continue with our mapping and data analysis. And again, with all the work of DSEC, we wouldn't be able to do it on our own. We anticipate that we'll be able to reach out to them for some additional funds and comment on that with respect to some grant opportunities. And we're heading in the right direction with that. The piece on the MCAS and the POC testing, Karen also will finish up on that because it is a state requirement that school districts throughout Commonwealth are moving to go to a new testing requirement called POC test, if you will. Many districts this year pilot testing. We were not able to do that for a lot of reasons, but we wanna jump on board going forward next year. And in that, we started to make use of technology from the dismal date of April 8th. We lost this part of everything. We believe now we're gonna be in pretty good shape. All right, Karen, come up and...
Thank you. So the POC assessment is very beneficial to this district. And the reason it's beneficial is all school districts are gonna be utilizing POC from 2015-16 as anticipated by the DESE. That being said, if we choose as a district to go with POC, it gives us the opportunity to stay ahead of the curve, so to speak, and expose our students to that assessment. So what really is the difference in the assessment between POC and MCAS? The POC assessment is directly aligned to the Commonwealth Core. It's better aligned. And whereas MCAS is aligned, but it's not as aligned to the new Commonwealth Core. So it's critical that our students have the opportunity to be exposed to this type of testing in preparation for the ultimate decision by the DESE to adopt POC from Massachusetts in general. That being said, another benefit to this district to have POC, the POC assessment, is we will be held harmless. That's the clause that they speak of. The held harmless clause basically means if we offer POC to our students and they perform poorly, we are held harmless. So we will not drop to a level four, let's say. Or if a school is in a level one status or a level two status, they will not drop to level three if we have POC. And I see that as an advantage because it gives our students the opportunity to be up on the newest assessment, to have practice with the newest assessment, to test their knowledge in direct alignment with the Commonwealth Core, and be held harmless. So from that perspective, it really is a win-win. It's also offered both paper and online. So we do have that option. I know that we're struggling with technology, but we are working to resolve that. But I just wanna let folks know that we can do it via paper if we need to. Additionally, with the POC testing, all of our students not only have the opportunity to be exposed to the assessment and to be up on the best practice, they also have the opportunity to give us their feedback. It's my understanding from the DESE that surveys were conducted across the state and students gave their direct feedback about, you know, what they felt, where they felt they needed more training. We as a district will be offered training if we choose to adopt POC. We do have to make that decision in October, but by the end of the month, we have to, in terms of setting ourselves up for training, it's best for us by June 30th to make that decision, which is why Dr. Malvi is bringing it forward tonight. So that's a decision that the committee can make with Dr. Malvi as to whether or not we wanna adopt the POC. But again, it is a win-win for the district and for the students. Do you have any questions about that before I move forward with DSEC? Okay. So the work continues with the DSEC, District School Assistance Center. As we're wrapping up the school year, I have one final meeting with them next week. They've been coming out all year long, well above and beyond the PD days to meet with our faculty. And we've had scheduled dates where they've come out for free. We've paid the substitutes for them to meet with DSEC out of the grant money and wrap up the work of curriculum mapping. A lot more needs to happen with the curriculum mapping. What we're doing next week is we're finalizing the binders in pre-K to 8 for ELA and math. And we set the dates, which are on the calendar on the agenda tonight, for next year's PD. DSEC highly recommended that we set the dates with them because their calendar is filling up. They service many, many districts. So those are the dates that they could offer us for continued half-professional development. In addition, more grant funding is coming out, so that's great news. So far this year with grant funding, I've been able to order the majority of the books for the model curriculum units in ELA for grades 2 and 3 teachers. I believe grade 3 right now is complete and I'm finalizing ordering the last units for grade 2 at no cost to this district other than through other grant funds. And I found out, I went to a training last week with the DSEC folks, that another grant is coming out. So I'm gonna be writing that second week in July. They're thinking it's gonna be about $17,000 for our district, but they haven't confirmed that yet. It's not finalized. It was a hypothetical number that they gave us for each district. It's estimated. But anyway, they're pretty confident that if I write the grant, we're gonna get that again and that will continue to allow us to buy materials and supplies. You know, in addition, I'm gonna be utilizing Title I funds to start focusing on math too because we do have to start focusing on materials and supplies in the area of math. So that's what's happening with DSEC. It's exciting. They're excited to continue to partner with us and they're willing to give us their time and work very diligently with us through this process.
Thank you, Karen. Does anybody have any questions from the board? Mr. Knopf?
I want you to make sure you all write your school on right of limits. 100%? What, maybe 90%?
No, we get, are you asking if I write the grant, do I get what I request? Yes, 100%. Everything that I've written, I've been granted through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's been fantastic and I've developed a lot of nice relationships at the state level and I believe that this has helped us in terms of getting our grants approved and also moving forward with initiatives. Every year I have to report out on the grants that I write and the progress that we've made. And thus far, based on last year moving into this year and their approval of the grants, they've been pleased with the work and they continue to approve our grant funding, which is critical for us. Thank you.
Any other questions from any members?
I, once before the committee with this, Karen's comments on the POC testaments, I'm recommending that the district go forward for the 14, 15 school year with the POC testing as opposed to the MCAS testing. And the reason for that is there's a difference of opinions throughout the Commonwealth where the Department of Education, even though they've used this current year as a pilot year, they have said that going forward, districts have to make a decision now and they'll give them one more year to determine whether they'll go MCAS or POC. But they left it up to the local district. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has opinion on it that it's up to the local superintendent to determine whether we'll go MCAS or POC. M-C-A-S, Massachusetts, I'm sorry, M-A-S-C, Mass Association of School Committees, Legal Council has opinion that it falls in the basket of the school committees and that it should be voted by the school committee. I'm not here to wear stripes. I'm on the side of caution, so I'm bringing it before the committee to vote. The recommendation is that we go with POC. And with that, there's also a piece I believe corrected Karen in the high school at grade 11 that if need be, we still could do MCAS, but that's the old grade. Otherwise, it would be POC.
It would just be grade 10. Grade 10. Grade 10. So if we adopt POC, the entire district will do POC. With the exception of grade 10, they will stick with the MCAS. That is the state guideline.
So that is the recommendation to the committee and I would ask that we...
Is there a motion about the Malvi's request? Okay, motion by Mr. Knopf, is there a second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cootie.
Okay, second, but first, a discussion?
Do you think the superintendent can speak tables while I'm going to...
It can because we have to notify by June 3rd to the state.
I just was not prepared to act on this issue. There was no information in our package that said you were gonna join us, but I had done zero on the Arts. So I'd like to...
Perhaps I may suggest, will you, we could ask the superintendent to put something together for us to propose a plan or some idea for recommending boxes for us?
I would agree with that.
Yes, Karen?
So I have a packet here. Maybe Martha could make copies for you folks. It explains everything. It's POC versus MCAS right from the DESE website. So I think that would be critical for you folks to have, just to be aware too. There's a schedule in here. So if, we have to be careful about when we make this decision because in July, they're gonna be offering workshops and training for us. So if we don't vote on it and we miss out on the training, it's gonna be a disadvantage for us, especially as administrators, to have a clear understanding of what we need to do. So just wanna make that clear.
Okay, perhaps we could ask the administration to give that mail to all members? This would be something, if you'd like to make that as part of the motion, Mr. Pudie? I'll do the captain. Okay, Mr. Noddy, would you, people, would you draw your motion? I recall my motion, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the motion is being drawn.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion that we ask the administration to give the information to the director of MCAS, and probably the chairman of the administration, so that we can go on.
Second, please. Okay, I approach the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Both are voted. Next, I have FY 15 budget update, reconsideration, adoption of the, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pudie.
Our last school committee is forward to establish a subcommittee. That subcommittee is Senator and myself, who act as subcommittee with the superintendent and Pudie, in regards to looking at the budget and seeing possible ways that we can make reductions in the state, explore the options. Can everybody give me a vote? We did that. We actually met on two occasions. We met on 5/29. We met on 6/5. Unfortunately, to an error, there was no postevent meeting on 5/29. At both meetings, no motions were made, and no votes were taken. That wasn't the charge. The charge of the committee was to discuss with the administration potential ways to elect. At our 5/29 meeting, Dr. Malby added in-house force and made a small presentation of potential areas that could be cut. And after the presentation, both Senator and myself decided that we needed a week to redo that, and then we came back at our 6/5 meeting to discuss it. Some of the things that were thrown around are halftime principle of Lake Street School, the reduction of two kindergarten teachers, reduction of East Brookfield teacher, the workbooks, the library supplies, Knox Trail team leaders, and conflict mediation. After we discussed it, we didn't feel that halftime principle of Lake Street was the way to go. We felt that, given some of the events that occurred in this district in this past year, we felt very strongly that we needed the principals at each one of our departments to make sure, to ensure the safety of the children. So with that, when we passed last year's, excuse me, when we passed the budget for FY 15, seven thousand, this board compromised the heading of the agreement. And the compromise was that if the budget failed, we would remove the teacher from East Brookfield in the binding classes. So that's in front of us this evening. Beyond that, we also decided that class sizes had to be equal throughout the district, and that's not the case. And so we're also looking at reducing a kindergarten teacher out of East Brookfield in Wild West. Those class sizes, that there's remained two kindergarten teachers in East Brookfield, would have been somewhere between 14 children in the class, excuse me, seven children, seven to 10 children in that class, in two classes. By combining, we'll end up somewhere between 14 and 20 children in the class. Further than that, as you know from what we just transferred from FY 14 budget, Julie, along with the superintendent, went through and scrubbed every single account, given that there's only two and a half weeks left in this school year, and looked for every available percent that we have. We were able to purchase workbooks for $17,000 in FY 14 money and not use it. So now we're able to cut that in the FY 15 budget. Probably doing that, for example, when it comes to FY 60 budget, it's going to be $17,000 short. It's actually further short than that. We just need to be cognizant of what we're doing. That's why we're sharing this with the board, so that everybody's aware that we're kind of lobbying Peter to pay Paul. We also cut the library supplies to all the different schools. And when I say we cut, these are things that are on the table, nothing's been done. As I said, team leaders, $4,000 at Knox Trail, and conflict mediation, $4,000. We're at a total of those potential reductions, it's $189,400. That said, we brought back that to this committee tonight, Mr. Chairman. That's what we're for. There are lines, and certainly he's not the only advocate we respect. I mean, there are other board members, there are not too much budgets, we feel that there's other areas in the circuit. And so we feel that these are prudent areas that we need to deal with this evening. Some of these have been discussed at nauseam before, but certainly I think we should take each one of them up, like you said you would do, discuss them, vote on them individually, and then consider adopting the budget. Further than that, I just want to throw into the mix that the state, in the budget that's being sent down from the state, the transportation dollars were originally set at 7% reimbursement to the state. And the most recent budget that we've brought down, there's a 90% reimbursement. Now, the difference in dollars is about $145,000. Now, certainly I'm not going to make a motion that we reduce our budget by that this evening because that's our plan of abortions. We don't know if that would be passed, but I certainly would be willing, and we can discuss this, to make a motion to the community that if in fact that the reimbursement was increased by that 20%, and we received that additional funding through the state, that we would reduce the assessments to the $2,000. Now, this would not be cutting the budget. This is very different than cutting the budget. The budget stays the same. The expense is still there. It's just a matter of how we're paying for that expense. So that's the report of, at least that's the report that I have. I'd like to turn it over to Heather, if it seems like there's something she's about to clarify or add anything.
Do you have any questions?
Well, we're going to have a discussion about the line of, or I didn't hear.
We're going to go over it one by one. Do you have any?
No, I just feel a little bit of a, I've made a comment, but I have to say this, I want to take it on.
Mr. Chairman, here's one question at June 6th, excuse me, June 5th meeting, by a member
of the public who attended. He asked if minutes would be posted to that meeting? And minutes will be posted. Dr. Malby, you're taking into the meeting. As I said, there were no motions, no posts, will be, will be posted the minutes. There will be no minutes posted of the 5/29 meeting, as there was no meeting given that vote.
Thank you. I think the way the chair will handle this is we'll go through the recommendations of the subcommittee one at a time. I'll ask for a motion and a second for discussion, and then we'll have the discussions and we'll take a vote. So the first item being suggested by the subcommittee is 150 high teachers. Is there a motion?
Motion to reduce by five.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Pudie to reduce $110,000. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Noddy. Discussion. Hi?
Excuse me.
A discussion. I have it.
Okay, I just feel, I see the year enrollment numbers are low for Lake Street, but I also see the numbers at Wyatt Village and how they're inflated. And I would like to see that kindergarten position being transferred to Wyatt Village to reduce the class size. The third grade at Wyatt Village is at, well, the incoming third grade is at 126, the largest class size is 27. We look at that third grade, the teachers of Lake Street, we move to that third grade position, we can reduce class sizes to 21. But that's a lot of talent for them. And also, we need East Brookfield Elementary, yes, we have low enrollment, but we also don't have some of the other services that the Sorenson Schools have, or Title I. And I just saw that we have a reading specialist position posted on school screen for Wyatt Village and Lake Street, and I understand that East Brookfield won't have that position because we're not a Title I school. So the only way we're accommodating these kids who are struggling with reading is through our class sets. So I'm very hesitant to cut an additional position in East Brookfield Elementary when I see a need for a reading specialist position here at this school.
Any other comments by any of the members?
Yeah, I have a comment. Just gave you. I want to reiterate a little bit from what Mrs. Messier was saying, where I've noticed the third grade class, there are, there's five classrooms, and for fourth grade right now, and this, I'm sorry, this is at Wyatt Village, and fourth grade, they're going to move those five classrooms into four classrooms. So they're looking at it, getting those numbers up around the average of 29 students in classroom. I mean, that, to me, that's, that's well beyond, well beyond what they should be. I can't see cutting these teachers. I think, you know, I understand the enrollment, it looks low. I think it needs to be up to the principal's discretion to move, to move the teachers the way they're needed. And I, and I'm going to agree on these topics, that we need a small, a small thing to prioritize, and we need to make up for what I've been specializing in.
Any other comments? Okay, here are none. We'll take this one on the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Propose?
No.
Okay, it's a majority vote. Yeah, it's not a roll call vote, it's just a something of a majority vote. Messier, Mr. Pudie?
The next item on the potential reductions for East Brookfield teacher, which is second grade, combining that to next year to third grade. One of the continues, one of the compromises that I did, I voted for this budget, and it was three members that by this board, although we have two members that were not there, so they certainly need to weigh in on this. So not to do so, is that if this budget failed, we would make that reduction, and I certainly didn't make a motion.
A motion made by Mr. Pudie to cut the one East Brookfield teacher. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Noddy. Discussion. Comments from the board members?
I just, I think, the only reason I support cutting this position is because of the agreement that I, or not, in agreement, cutting that position, but I will support.
Okay, any other comments by members?
Yeah, I, I would just like to reiterate what I just said, and I'm not in agreement with this. I don't, I don't agree with the numbers, and they showed a special edge, and we need to make it work.
Any other members with any comments?
I'm sorry, what grade? There's two seconds for third grade.
Right, current second, I should.
So we have a third grade teacher? And it's still the same class?
No.
Do you want to talk about, do you guys have a comment?
If you cut the two teachers, for the two first grade, one second, and a third, and a second?
Two first grade. So they cut the teachers around here? I'm sorry, I didn't do this. So like a kindergarten teacher becomes a first grade teacher?
Can I open that one?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, what's going to happen if you cut this teacher, it's happening now, is every year, teachers have to move to a different grade to teach. That's another, you know, reason not to do this. I have a teacher that taught first grade last year, third grade this year, and she could potentially teach fourth grade next year. That's not good practice. So again, every meeting, it seems like I'm up here trying to save these positions, and it's not working, but there are many reasons. Also, just to let you know, the kindergarten position, we go down to one class, we will have triplets in one class. That's not good educational practice. There's a lot more I could say, but I'll save it till later.
Any other questions from members?
Mr. Chairman, Pudie? I just want to speak to myself. I don't think any member of this board, I'm going to speak privately to myself, feels comfortable in reducing any of the teachers. Oh, the budget did fail through the adoption. We need to come back with some sort of reduction that we can at least show that we're making it happen. I mean, that's what it's about. I made a pretty good statement at our last meeting, that our budget is very, very good at the number we set, yet it was not fast, it was not certain, it didn't have a lot of input. It's only potential for cutting, obviously, positions, or three positions. That's the only thing.
Your point is well taken, Mr. Pudie. I was actually in, in favor of cutting this position last year, and because of the motion we made, we were trying, in case the override didn't pass, but if it did, we would come back here and have a review of our assignment, so I intend to follow suit of that, which we said we wanted to do at that time. So not hearing any more questions from members, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? All right. Next item, Pudie?
The next two items, workbooks and library supplies. The recommendation, certainly from me, would be to cut these. We actually funded that in FY 14, but it's a very improvement of the way we spent money on this budget. And quite frankly, at the expense of the students. To some degree, we should change the student's position, so that we can say so, it's money to make sure we get to the end. But we see the end is certainly, I would say. I would make a motion that we cut $70,000 from workbooks and $2,800 from library supplies.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Pudie. Is there a second? Second by, discussion.
I would support this, if this is being reinstated, and if the budget is whatever.
Any other comments? Okay, here are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Propose? So voted. Mr. Pudie?
Next item is Knox Trail team leaders. I actually put the title on the principal of Knox Trail, and had a lengthy conversation on both of these issues, because I really want to see here, it'll be important for us. And I do think they're important. They're very important. I think that if we save the $4,000 for the budget time, it is, I'm sorry, the superintendent asked if it is essential to combine that $4,000. We're not talking about $55,000 for a teacher. If we combine that $4,000 somewhere, we could probably, we'd say, but I don't want to make the recommendation that's.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pudie to cut the 15. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Noddy. Discussion.
Chairman, the only other thing I'd like to add is that this was not in the original budget that Dr. Malby sent to the board. This was something that the school committees are fondly about, and he added this budget after the, as in FY 15.
Okay. Any other further comments?
What is it?
Joyce, would you care to put the, raise the item first?
Yes, yeah, that's okay. On the side of the chair, I have a question.
It's fine.
So best practice for, best practice for middle school models to team a building. So we have, presently have four teams. We have sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and a split team. So I was looking to get funding to have a leader for each team. Purpose of the leader is to meet with me, to analyze data, to bring information back to the team, to run meetings, and, you know, it's best practice to do that. It's really distributive leadership, and basically that's what team leaders are.
Chris, could you just give a brief snapshot of this, where conflict mediation, in this semester?
Conflict mediation program began in this school district, it's grades four to 12, 17 years ago. What it does is it trains students to mediate conflict.
to twelve seventeen years ago. Um, what it does is it trains students to mediate conflict. I know you were, so you know I am. So, you know, it's a very valid program. Um, you know, I understand the need for the cuts. Um, we all have to feel the pain, so I hope that explains what the program is. Um, we had it for quite a while. The, the reason that we asked for the money is so that we could, um, have advisors over the city. They sit in on all the mediations. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we have a, uh, motion for the conflict, uh, for team leaders. Motion made, second, by Mr. Nodkis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted. Mr. Cudey?
The last item is conflict mediation, four thousand dollars. Again, this is something that the school committee is also fondly about. It's not part of the original budget. We added this, uh, to the budget. Unfortunately, this time, it's by the inside items that you've got.
A motion made by Mr. Cudey. Yep. Uh, a motion made by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nodkis. Discussion. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted. Mr. Cudey?
So at this point, those are the items that, uh, we felt, uh, any, uh, possibility of, of being reduced, uh, because of the average budget. Uh, the only item that we have, on the other side of the equation, there is potential savings in the district. The employee benefit line between working the retired teachers from the GIC, uh, and bargaining with, uh, insurance companies to reduce the active employees, uh, healthcare, premium costs, all the life insurance that we got to purchase, we're opening out of the GIC, I TIC, and other, uh, employee benefits. We're going to realize potential employee benefit savings in FY fifteen of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. What I would recommend, and I will make a formal motion, that would do with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, is we take fifty thousand dollars of that, and we apply it to our FY fifteen legal account. That's an issue in the district this year, that, uh, spiraling costs, legal bills, and we will need that in next year. And with the balance of two-hundred-thousand dollars, given the, I would feel, budget of the debt exclusion, I would recommend, and I will make a formal motion, that we earmark that to their column.
Okay, uh, so we have those motions by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nodkis. Discussion. In regards to the, uh, in regards to the, uh, issue that Mr. Cudey just spoke to, uh, we have had ongoing talks, uh, with the Spencer Board Select and, and Town Administrator, and, uh, they were willing to come forward and, uh, to help us out to move the technology issue forward. So combining, uh, funds that we are going to receive from them, as well as the funds that we're able to earmark here, it should put us well on our path to being able to mediate the, uh, technology crisis that we currently have. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Cudey has got the motion, it's a second. Uh, any further discussion or questions he has asked? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted. Okay, uh, are there any suggestions from any members or constant work recommended by the subcommittee? Cudey suggested that, uh, if anyone had any, the outside subcommittee's recommendation, does anyone have any that they want to offer? If not, we move on to the next issue. Okay. Okay. Uh, Dr. Malley's informed me that we need a formal vote on the one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred, uh, so we need that as a motion.
Well, I, I gotta choose the new budget number. Do you want to do it that way, or do you want to use the new budget number for the new budget?
Dr. Malley?
Uh, my point is that, uh, the committee has to vote, um, to reconsider, uh, the new budget figure if it will. In that voting with these individually, I just wanted to sum it up, that it's a total of reductions of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred as individually listed and voted by the committee. But collectively now, that has to be rolled into the new budget figure, because that's the purpose of, uh, the vote. The committee has, uh, up to thirty days to reconsider the budget from the budget figure that was completed. So, correct it on one, but the new budget figure would be twenty-three million nine-hundred-sixty-two thousand three-hundred-ninety-five dollars. Twenty-three, nine-sixty-two, three-nine-and-fi. And that would represent the reduction of one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-four-hundred from the previously approved budget figure of twenty-four million one-hundred-fifty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-five. Technically, that's the vote that needs to be taken. If so approved, then that will be sent off with the new assessments to the respective towns.
Thank you, Dr. Malley. Okay, motion made by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nodkis. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
This is going to be a roll call vote? Okay. On a, on a roll call vote, Mr. Cudey?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Heather?
No.
Mike?
No.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
Chris? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes.
At this time, I would make a motion to send those two towns' councilmen that, uh, who are, uh, who are six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars.
A motion made by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Second by Angela. Any further discussion? Got that on a roll call vote, uh, this one? On a roll call vote, Mr. Cudey?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Chris? Chris? And the chair votes aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I would make a non-motion on this, that, uh, if in fact the state budget comes in, funding regional transportation at ninety percent instead of seventy percent, that this board formally goes this evening to refund, uh, or to reassess the two communities, uh, the difference between that. Because I don't think it's appropriate for us to cut that budget this evening, or cut those funds from the assessment this evening. It would be unknown what, what could happen in twenty-four hour at the state level, that budget, anything could happen. So we have that, uh, in the state budget, uh, I would say we hold it, but we would be permitted to the communities, and that's my motion, we'd permit to the communities that we will reassess them with those discussions.
Motion made by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Second by Angela. Discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted.
Uh, I just need some clarification. I think we also need to take action with respect to the technology article that the committee just reduced of six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars. I would recommend that there be a substitute article based to this, in that the Spencer Board Selectmen, I believe, have all approved a request to come forward. So the way I would, uh, summarize this is that going from our original request of six-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand dollars, we would have a new request, the recommendation from the committee is, we would have a new request, uh, a technology article, for one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. One-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. And of that, based on what Spencer Selectmen through the town administrator had informed us, their share they would come up with would be one-hundred-seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars. One-hundred-seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars. And in that, East Brookfield already approved that technology article that their town needed, at the higher amount, we simply would lower their amount to twenty-six-thousand-eighty-two dollars, in terms of the request. But I'll also put this out there, that East Brookfield would have the way, if they wanted to still maintain their original amount, to potentially purchase computers for the sole use of East Brookfield Elementary School. And in fact, that was questioned for my meetings with finance community people and selectmen, and I leave even on town meeting floor. So I just want to leave the door open there, that East Brookfield really was in a pretty good position, even though the dollar amount based on this potential rule is low, they could still go up to their original amount that they approved, uh, which I believe was, uh, the balance that directed Julie about one-hundred-and-fourteen, one-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. So they could go up to that ceiling anywhere, or any version of it that they so chose, or kind of up, at the new request of twenty-six oh eight two. The committee with that, do they understand that's going? So, so again, the, the request is for a new article to be submitted in the total amount of one-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-four-hundred-eighty-eight dollars. Spencer's share would have been one-hundred-seventeen-thousand-four-hundred-six dollars. East Brookfield, twenty-six oh eight two. And if that's so approved, and then eventually receives approval by Spencer Town Meetings, there is no need and no request from the Board of Education Committee, uh, for a debt exclusion. It eliminates that requirement.
Chairman, so, motion made by Mr. Cudey, a second? Second by Mr. Nodkis. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted. Thank you, Dr. Malley. Uh, next item is the fingerprinted policies, second reading and adoption. Dr. Malley, do you have any comments?
Uh, no further comments. Uh, I think we've, uh, covered it in the previous meetings. Certainly, nothing has changed on our end, and it's analogous to the previous.
Any, uh, comments, uh, by the board? Do we just require a full talk? If not, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Propose? So voted. Okay, uh, the next, uh, item on the agenda is the superintendent search update and, uh, announcement of the, uh, screening committee members. At our, uh, last group meeting meeting, the board voted to designate a chair, uh, to appoint, uh, a screening committee intercept this process and motion. Uh, I contacted all the members. I asked for suggestions of people to be appointed onto the committee, uh, from both communities, and I also asked, uh, for suggestions for members as far as qualifications or skill sets that they were looking for in the first thing we were going to try to bring in here to be our superintendent. After reviewing all the names that have been given to me, uh, I'm going to announce the appointment tonight, uh, of those people, and then I'm going to ask the board to take a formal vote, uh, to approve the people that I'm, that I'm appointing. The reason for that is by doing it by a formal vote of my appointing, uh, those members will now become covered under chapter two fifty-eight of the Thor Act, so that if there are any legal problems that arise through the process of the screening, i.e. information is leaked out about potential candidates and names and that type of thing, committee members will have, uh, that same protection that the two members on the board are going to have if we're covered, uh, by, uh, insurance category. Uh, so having said that, uh, the first two members on the board will be two school committee members, Angela Knackton, a, a newest member, and Craig Nodkis. Uh, the chair has appointed Julie Soupe and I, our business manager, uh, to serve, um, from an administration standpoint. Uh, for parents, I went through the names suggested to me, and Amanda Lambick from East Brookfield. Uh, Amanda has three children in the district. She's been a speech pathologist for around fifteen years at Weed Works in the Quatlin School System. And her mom is a retired superintendent of schools, half of the town of Westville. So, uh, Amanda looked like a real good fit to me, uh, to serve on this committee. Uh, the other parent from Spencer that I'm appointing is Tracy Jeffries. Uh, Tracy has two children, attend Lake Street School. Uh, she's been in HR, uh, at Commerce Bank for the past ten or eleven years, and, uh, she also seemed to be a real good fit to be, uh, to work with the other members that I have appointed so far. Uh, I had several teachers, uh, that had asked to be on. Uh, we are, I am going to appoint Michelle Durant, who's a kindergarten teacher for the past seven years, uh, at Lake Street School. Uh, that gave us a pretty good, um, committee, I think, with a vast array of experience to work from. And it was the intention of the chair to serve as the seventh member. Uh, reflecting on that, uh, I came to the decision that it was best for me not to serve on that committee, and to, uh, take a position strictly as an ex-official member, and to give some guidance when needed to the committee. I, I think it's really important, from a credibility standpoint, that everybody in both communities believes that we're going to put forward a process that's going to be a thoughtful and beyond approach, and is not going to be steered by any member of the staff. Now, having said that, and moving my steps in the committee, I had to find another person that would bring that type of experience and expertise, uh, to be able to lead this committee through the process. And, uh, I was fortunate enough, uh, to be able to get the services of Charles O'Connor, who lives in Spencer. Uh, he's here tonight. Uh, Charlie, would you stand up, please? Uh, Mr. O'Connor is a former city, uh, assistant manager for the city of Worcester, and longtime manager, uh, from the town of Wall. I, I believe his breadth of experience and expertise will bring a level of, of quality to this committee, and, uh, he will be able to keep everybody, uh, on target. Uh, he'll keep this thing moving. Uh, he has the background and experience to answer a lot of the questions that members, uh, may have. And at the same time, I'm going to grant authority to Mr. O'Connor to have access, uh, to labor, uh, to school council, so that any issues that may arise, uh, during the course of the search, uh, he will have the freedom not to learn any questions he has, uh, by legal counsel. Uh, so that gives us, uh, I think, in, in my mind, a very well-rounded, uh, committee. Uh, they're, they're, they're very excited. They're really cranked up and ready to go. And, uh, after the announcement of the members tonight, uh, I, uh, believe we'll be having a, uh, meeting early next week. And that first meeting will be an orientation meeting in which I will have, uh, uh, Labor, uh, School Counsel, E. Moskers. And if the board so holds tonight and continues on track, uh, with Glenn Puchek, uh, from the School Committee Association, uh, they will be, uh, served in the capacity of assisting and consulting, uh, this committee along the way. Uh, having said that, I have put together a, um, along with, uh, council, a confidentiality agreement that, uh, I believe that every member of the, um, appointing to this committee, and I have a lack confirmation from the board on this as well, will sign this confidentiality agreement. Uh, this is a real important task that this folks are going to take on, and, uh, everyone's confidentiality must be kept. And, uh, in order to ensure that, to protect the school district, uh, I'm going to insist that any member that serves and is going to have to sign this agreement, and, uh, they will take full responsibility for any discussions that they have outside of the executive session and the, the meetings that take place from that screening committee. Um, I'm going to ask that, uh, that we appoint Martha Berthew as the confidential clerk to that committee, and she'll sign that agreement as well, as will, uh, the councilman, uh, Mr. Pucher. I would like to ask the board, uh, the board at this time, uh, is it still their intention to consider, uh, Mass Food Association as the consultant, uh, that we'll use, uh, for this process? I think one thing that we had kicked around was that, uh, we would try that and vote what they would do for us, and then if we're not satisfied with the pool of results from that, we would then have the ability to, along with hiring a private recruiter, uh, if we so chose. Uh, I requested to Mr. Pucher to, uh, follow to us the services that he would provide on a no-cost basis. It's pretty much the whole realm, other than just us being charged for any postage or any type of brochures, we make sure to have them made and to mail off. So we're, we're pretty much going to be operating on a very good fee, uh, from the association, uh, excuse me. So, uh, is there, is there a motion from the board, uh, to go with the, um, School Committee Association?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Mr. Cudey. I will make a motion that the, the life services of the Mass Association of School Field, uh, to assist the search committee with this survey. Uh, also add to that motion that if we do not get the, the pool of candidates, that that search committee feels is adequate, uh, to support this district, that we immediately move forward, uh, to another, uh, government, uh, head-on insurance to, uh, help us fill that situation.
Right motion made by Mr. Cudey. Is there a second? Right motion made by Mr. Pooey, is there a second?
Second by Mr. King.
Any further discussion, questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
All so voted. I will follow a copy of the confidentiality agreements and the, and the member that noticed, it's going to go up to everybody, I will get a copy followed, followed to all the members. I would ask that a motion from the board that would allow me, I came across a couple issues after talking to Mr. O'Connor, that we thought should be addressed by council in regards to the screening committee and the fact that we don't want members of the committee to be lobbied by people that may have a favorite community that we've committed, and we would like to include in the confidentiality agreement, and it's not there now, but any member of the screening committee that is lobbying is brought to the chair immediately, and the chair will decide what action we'll be taking with that. So I'd ask that to be the formal motion. So, Mr. Pooey, a motion, second? Second by Mr. Nodkis, any further questions or discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
All so voted. And seeking some contribution from the members, I made a list of what members had sent to me, what you thought for qualifications for the superintendent, what you thought the skill set should be, that we should be looking at, and surprisingly, a lot of them were, two or three of you said the same thing and stuff, so I made a list of some of the bases that we can certainly add to that, but I'd like to have something tonight that I can go follow and pass on to the chair of this committee, as we can get moving on this and start working this week. So for qualifications, almost everybody on the committee had to be certified as a superintendent or eligible for certification. Almost everybody was looking for somebody with a minimum of a masters degree, prep degree, an office degree. Some were looking for a curriculum experience, I added from core developmental alignment, so that we would have from beginning to end. Some members had asked for a central office experience, some also indicated putting years for central office experience, and I'll leave that up and ask for a vote of the board. My own personal experience, I feel in a lot of it is that I don't really want to get hung up on a number of years of experience. I think what we're going forward to look for, we may not be coming back here with somebody with fifteen, twenty years of front office experience, but we may find somebody with a couple of years of experience, if you're willing to want to take this challenge. So my fear is if we box ourselves up and made some real good potential candidates by putting that type of hook in on them. And then some had made the comment that the president should have experience as a teacher or as an administrator, either one. So those were the, those were the major points that were brought up in the qualifications. In regards to skill set, we had some folks that suggested that the new superintendent should have a good understanding of the educational evaluation system as being promoted. Another suggestion was he should have a good understanding of school-based technology and how to implement that into the learning environment. I think the majority had mentioned that the new superintendent should have some experience with common core, with art. A big one that almost everybody had was somebody with financial and business management experience, and I added that forecasting, planning, and cash flow experience. Everybody had formal, not the word formal, but the basic idea was formal or informal listening skills, to be able to work with everybody in a different community, to be a good listener and not come into any preconceived notions, to be able to hear what the community is saying, what the board is saying, what the board is saying. Another big one was communication skills, to collaborate and build relationships. Given the problems that we've had in the past, it's really important that we get a superintendent that is willing to put some focus and some effort on building those bases where we can get support from the community and from employees and from people in the district, someone that can project that vision and provides some leadership that gets us to where we need to go. I had added to that, and I think in a summary, what we really need is someone that understands the political realm, the social, political realm of the school committee and the elected officials, the social realm of the community, and the pedagogical realm of the teaching and learning process, and I think that would sum up everything that we really need that person to do. And the last point that most folks had was the political skills to build support for priorities in the district. So when we have issues with debt exclusions or overrides or to build a new school, that we would have a superintendent that has the political skills and is willing to monitor the community and build those relationships that will allow him to bring forward the priorities that the board has established. So that in a nutshell, a little sprinting from the chair is what the comments from the board members have given me. I would, I'm open to any further suggestions, any qualifications, or skill sets that anyone might have, that we might plot out, since you responded to me, or if we're going to act on it. If not, I would ask that we vote on these, or like to pass on to the chair. Does anyone have any further comments or suggestions? If not, is there a motion to approve? So, motion made by Mr. Pooey, is there a second? Second by Mike. Any further questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
All so voted. The other issue, this would be addressed, I guess, to Dr. Mallory. We need to work out the logistics starting next week for meetings, for the screening committee, and given the fact school meetings are soon, their meetings will most likely be taking place on Monday or Wednesday, let's try to avoid having Tuesday meetings so that we have the school committee meetings and chair of the committee to be present to stay on board with everything that's going on. What we just suggested be is the board, the meeting, the meeting is a problem when I come back before six thirty or seven o'clock, a lot of the folks on here have young kids and are teaching, have little jobs and some, eat some time, so we don't need an instance now, you can just something for you to do.
Yeah, we'll work it out, but we're trying to gear up for summer schedule and pay and maintenance, so we'll have people joshing for it, and we'll find something that comes.
Okay, all right, thanks, Jim. All right, that pretty much takes care of everything in regards to the screening committee. I will, I will notify Mr. Pucher, we'll get a contract signed, council will send me the, I did want to get phone bids and stuff, and we'll meet all those requirements, so that if we're not satisfied with the pool that we're following, we'll immediately jump into the vibrant recruiting program, we already have that big process that we're flying to the state. All right, the next item on the agenda is memorandum agreement, new teacher evaluation system, Dr. Mallory.
This item, I'm pleased to say that for many, many months, we have been able to get an agreement through the teachers' association and the administration that I've worked with. I asterisked in case the committee wanted to hear some of the details that we go to executive session before voting, I'm prepared to.
I think the only question that has come to mind, that has been dropped to me, Dr. Mallory, is in regards to the length of the contract, I just want to go with it for a year, I'm assuming because it was a part of the budget.
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure.
And let me just clarify that, that's on the MOA, and that doesn't mean that it becomes defunct after a year, because we still have a legal requirement to deal with the new requirements of teacher evaluation, but the intent is that we have a joint labor management committee for over a year to work out some of the greater detail that we will, that's in the overall evaluation document. The MOA, demo agreement, really cuts to the chase to say, as principal, we agree, we made some minor modifications that both sides can live with, and it gives us that good faith effort to really get into it and test the waters if we will. It's just about every school, this is a common law, has used a year of the year to try to work out the greater detail, and I'm glad it's, it'll be okay.
Mr. Kim?
I'm just Pooey. I would make a question if you can, this, if we want to executive session, have a big discussion and to back out and to vote that.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pooey, is there a second? Second by Heather, any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All so voted. Thank you, everybody. The next item is authorization to borrow, this is a yearly procedure, we need a vote to authorize the credit to borrow the money in anticipation of revenue. You have that motion in your packet, is someone be willing to make the motion? Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Pooey, any questions, comments?
Correct. Give it all amount, like it's, like it's, all. Aye.
All so voted. Next item, professional development day approved, Dr. Mallory.
Right, these are days that typically, the number of days, I should say, we typically have on our school calendar, a full day, and then one, two, three, four, half days, and because of the training requirements and professional development activities, we had to start blocking in dates with D-SAC and some of the other people. So Karen, my commission went ahead and made contact, and these are the dates that we anticipate we're able to lock up certain professional trainings, and now that gets built back in to the calendar, but we need two people.
Okay, there's motion to approve, that's taken, Dr. Mallory indicated. Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Nodkis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Angela, any questions, superintendent, discussion you got, sir? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
All so voted.
I will mention that when we come back after the MOA, there's going to be an additional request for three additional days because of the new teacher evaluation system, but I'll explain that first to the executive session, but the parameters of that, of the sake of the public, you may find out that there will be three, hopefully, the committee approves, there'll be three additional days added on, added on half days.
Next issue is personnel information, you have it in your packet, any changes in personnel? Anybody have any questions for the superintendent, in regards to that? There are none. The next thing you have in your packet is your enrollments for the month, anyone have any questions for the superintendent, in regards to that?
Jim?
Just Pooey.
No, I was just going to ask if we have the candidate card, I know, said that, you have that. Fifteen in East Brookfield, there are five candidates, which is, and there's ninety-five working for D-SAC.
Any other questions, Jim? I'm just Pooey for you, superintendent, about Mallory. Well, the summer, we get updated choices numbers, choices, as soon as that information comes, you know, I know that sometimes we don't see it, so September can unfold, but soon you can't see it obviously.
Any other questions? Next item, school newsletters, you have it in your packet, the newsletters from schools, and there were some people who wanted to, left to you tonight, anybody have any comments in regards to those? Mr. Nodkis?
I just want to say thanks to Principal Stash, for the school, I appreciate the work that all of you have done, and the value of the information, so I'm just going to give the principal of Stash, the prime.
Thank you, Greg. Next item, school committee comments and future agenda topics. I'm sorry, I did. Hearing for visitors. Yes.
Hi, I'm Mark Carpenter here from East Brookfield. First of all, I want to thank the committee, it appears they've done a very thoughtful and thorough job in preparing for this evening. One question I have, and maybe the committee can't answer it, but perhaps someone from Spencer can answer it. Will the newly proposed budget number, assuming it passes, assuming it's good to go, still result in an override need in Spencer? Yes. Do we know by how much? Even a rough number?
Around four hundred thousand.
Around four hundred thousand? Okay. I would ask, given that fact, and given the fact that Spencer has so clearly rejected the first override, why are you bidding against yourselves this evening? And I ask that from the standpoint of, if the first budget that you proposed was an honest, adequate, fair budget, by recommending the cuts that you're recommending tonight, what you're saying is, well, really, you didn't mean that. And secondly, there's probably little likelihood that an override is going to pass at all. If that happens, and if we go the same route as last year, which in all likelihood can happen, we'll have a joint meeting, the budget may or may not pass at joint meeting. As we all know from last year's experience, the state will then establish your budget. I would submit that there's a strong likelihood the state would not cut a budget in a school system that's already struggling. Now, they may give deference to the town of Spencer, but frankly, as a committee, I see your role as one to fight for and defend what you already said was a fair and adequate budget. In effect, what you're saying is Spencer's problem has become your problem. I would submit Spencer's problem is Spencer's problem. Now, the proposed cuts that you're putting forth tonight in this revised budget, we thank you very much in East Brookfield, the one and only town in this district that supported not only the budget, but the full share of the technology proposal, you're rewarding us with the loss of two teaching positions, in spite of the fact that Mrs. Messier, who is in fact a teacher, who has experience with early childhood education, is telling you that because we are not a Title I school, that we need smaller class sizes, especially at these grade levels, to be able to make up for the deficiency of not having those experts on board. So again, thank you for rewarding us, for supporting you. My next point is, and this is perhaps going to sound a little bit random, is there a reason why there are no administrators, with all deference to Mrs. Superintendent, no administrators on the search committee? We have no principals, we have no assistant principals, we have no administrators, and yet, we think that this is a broad-based look. In every search committee that I've ever been on in a professional setting, there is always some senior leadership involved, always. We've chosen to include none, and I challenge the board on that. Finally, with regard to the offer, and gracious offer frankly, from Dr. Mallory, with regard to the East Brookfield technology, I can't speak for any other board, as you, many of know, I'm on the finance committee, but the finance committee has discussed this prior to this, and while we welcomed the fact that our share would be reduced, in the event that we choose to fund the balance of what it will take to fully upgrade the technology in a school, there is strong opinion, and again, I'm not speaking for the entire board, and I'm certainly not speaking for the board selected, but there is a strong feeling that it would be with the understanding that that equipment would be owned by catalog to the town of East Brookfield. East Brookfield, such that it cannot be moved from this building, except perhaps for repair. That would be the one scenario that we would consider throwing money at this. Now, some might ask, why would we be so concerned about that? Frankly, other equipment that we have purchased over the years, in fact, equipment that was purchased by the townspeople, has been moved and shared around the district, in many cases without the town's knowledge. Case in point, there's a thirty thousand dollar tractor that was bought with funds funded at the time of this school purchase, that has been regularly lent out and moved around the district. Lawnmower equipment, other equipment has regularly been moved. That's all well and good, but given the district's track record for maintenance and repairs and preventative maintenance, that is not something that I think the town, people in the town of East Brookfield are comfortable with. So I know that there are some rather random points here, but again, I think probably the most important point that I'd like to make is the fact that you're bidding against yourselves and you're hurting your own credibility by making cuts to a budget that you said was as lean as you could make it and still deliver level services. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Michael Toomey, Spencer Mass. I'd like to offer a couple of suggestions for the district's future town-to-gown tie-ins and events. I've been seeing the district looking at a number of opportunities tonight that should dovetail together in an approach for the schools and towns, both towns, mutual benefit, if they're done properly. You know, making the best of numerous difficult situations while changing our mentality will provide solutions. And as the district focuses on enhancing the science, engineering, and math, AKA STEM curricular opportunities, it also presents numerous opportunities to engage with the community and tie the lesson into the students' lives, both they and the community alike, we'll see for decades to come. Right now, we're seeing too often where it's us versus them, and that's bothering me. You know, I look at it, I say, that's not what it's about, folks, in the long run. A case in point is, following the recent votes, an announcement of Luther Hill Park's recreation program not being offered this summer was made. But how that impacts the town and the schools is entwined and is important for every citizen to understand what's one have to do with the other a lot if we focus on a STEM curricular that teaches and leads by example. For example, the discussions tonight address teacher evaluations as well as key positions being filled, which offer an opportunity to evaluate how staff is engaging students. I suggest that a starting point is easily seen with the Lake Street Lions, you know, as proud as they can be, having had a few of them myself, you know? The opportunity is to see their early STEM curricular manifest itself in a schoolyard habitat and tie that in just by walking across the street with Luther Hill Park. This is a time when you can get students engaged in physical activity before they focus on devices and before we stop trends that are currently leading to obesity. Right now, we'd be able to start seeing students take ownership of assets. The school is due to be theirs in the long run. One of the things that we want to do is look at how the district and the DP, Lake Street DPHS candidates should look at how they would institute schoolyard habitat programs and coordinate it with Knox Trail and Proud East Community Service Programs. There's going to be a coordination here. Right now, there's a big disconnect. This group doesn't talk to that, and there's no overall benefit for each town. I suggest that we start to engage each town's administration with the parts of the science and curricula that we could look at so that regardless of the debate of whether or not we have labeling and learning styles, or the number one lesson is that pride, et cetera, the top lesson is that pride and accomplishment is something that's immediately felt, and that's one thing that everyone in the district can get behind. The schoolyard habitat teaches the business, the basics of natural sciences with hands-on visual and kinesthetic learning. This would enhance all involved if the district started working with their parks and rec programs, both here and in Spencer. In Spencer's case, they'd be able to have the first graders begin with plantings, followed on with second graders working basic with knowledge and with participation in things that teach a little touch of things like the great American secchi disc dip in, where what they do is go out and drop a little disc in. It's basically something that they can do. Does it take a lot of budget resources? And what it does is it gets them to own the assets. That's what the district's not doing, and that's what neither town is doing in any of their programs, and I believe that's something we need to do. Then the school could have an open house and showcase each location and what the work is with community. These events would refresh the town-to-gown connection in a positive approach with visible results for years ahead. As the tradition continues, each successive generation will be taking ownership of their class's unique garden place in their parks and in their schoolyards. This also starts students on a path towards civic engagement with recognition by numerous boards. Some students may eventually become the next school committee, concom, or planning board because they learned their basic skills early on and felt connected to their town. The present system has a loss of connection between the two. The select board, concom, and planning board members could talk a little on how STEM is used in near municipal jobs as well. And that's the thing that I see time and again, having been a parent, watched kids go through the schools. The reality of what the application is doesn't get taught, and I'd like to see that going forward in the evaluation, how you time is it. We teach too often to the test. We don't teach to the application, and that's been one of the things that is a frustration. Many of you have been on boards, seen the different applications, what is needed to get done, but have you ever thought about coordinating the school committee with the town and seeing things go for a common goal? That's what we need to start doing, and that's where I'd like to see us focus. Thanks.
Any other business which to be heard? Okay, Sam Nunn, now school committee comments and future agenda topics. Any members have anything?
I just wanted to simply say a thank you to Mrs. Toomey at Wyatt Village. My nephew is in the third grade, and I actually their music program last weekend was heaven for them.
Thank you. Any other comments, running members, or any items that you'd like to see on the upcoming agenda for our next meeting?
I would just make a comment. I was asked to go to be a judge of the Declaration Contest at Knox Trail. Unfortunately, scheduling problems prevented the paper access from being there, and I'll tell you what an enjoyable evening it was. We saw some kids from Knox Trail doing an amazing job of reciting poetry and memorizing and their whole delivery. It was part of Larry Reynolds' Declaration Contest that's been going on for years, but I thoroughly enjoyed the evening and the community really lost out by not being able to see the ability of what these kids are doing. Thank you very much for asking. Great, great job.
Mr. Nodkuss?
I'd like to say, you brought this up. I have to go after my student graduation, and I'm going to call my professional from the day, the get-go. Lessons are by school, expectations are by staff, maybe whatnot, and she was outstanding as a senior student, a degree, and it's the most beautiful freshman day. So it's the best day to let school graduate, and you want to represent a real person, a person, and I think he's got running this passion, you know, future, he involves this guy, probably, you know, very well.
Any comments for you, Heather?
I just wanted to say thank you, Scotty, for filling every, the wonderful comments last, please, because Gary, that slideshow of your, his teary eyes, every one of you made great, nice job. This is, this is, thank you very much. I thoroughly enjoyed it, especially the pot night Joe dance. Nice job.
Any other comments? If not, then the chair will contain a motion to go into executive session. Thank you. If we return to the second, to take over, we're going to take a vote on the education evaluation. Mr. Pootier, is there a second? Second, so, not sure. It's just special, that's great, we respect you, nothing, no delay. Mr. Pootier, Angela? Heather? Mike? Greg? Chris? And Peter.